Thank you Pastor Ben War for that beautiful prayer. May I have the roll call please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today we have our city of Beaumont service award and I would like to turn it over to our interim city manager, Ms. Boone. Thank you.
Yes ma'am, good afternoon. Today we want to honor the service and dedication of some long-serving members of the city of Beaumont and we'll call them up one by one and after this presentation there will be a reception afterwards but mayor if you want to join me down here we'll go ahead and start.
Thank you.
So, the first person we want to recognize again, these are long-serving members of the city of Beaumont. The first person on our list has been with us for 25 years and that is Donald Chris Small, Parks Department.[341.13][341.13](applause) One, two, three. We have 13 longries today. I added it up, there's over 400 years of service.[404.13][404.13](applause) So next, William Kirk, Police Department, 25 years.[428.13][428.13](applause) Next, we have 25 years as well, Calvin Carrier with the Fire Department.[452.13][452.13](applause) Next, the 30 years of service in the city of Beaumont, Argo Delkris. All right, next with 30 years of service, Sean Colling, Police Department. All right, next with 30 years of service, Sean Colling, Police Department.[579.13][579.13](applause) All right, next with 30 years of service, Sean Colling, Police Department.[603.13][603.13](applause) All right, next, also with 30 years of service, Assistant Police Chief Jason Plunkett.[639.13][639.13](applause) All right, I'm seeing a trend here, also with 30 years, Assistant Police Chief Charles Also with 30 years, Parks Department, Tommy Bowden. All right, with 35 years of service, Cynthia Venter, 100.[783.13][783.13](applause) All right, with 35 years of service, Cynthia Venter, 100.[801.13][801.13](applause) That's my age. All right, also with 35 years of service in the city of Beaumont, Joanne Jacobs.[840.13][840.13](applause) All right, the next recognition for the Fire Department, 40 years.[869.13][869.13](applause) Last of all, also with 40 years of service, 1980, Libraries Gummel.[900.13][900.13](applause) Last of all, also with 40 years of service, 1980, Libraries Gummel.[970.13][970.13](applause) So again, we appreciate everyone's service, city of Beaumont, tremendous service not only in our organization but more importantly to our citizens. We do appreciate y'all's dedication. For those receiving recognitions, families, friends, we already have your reception down the hall so we invite y'all to make your way down there if you'd like and then again we'd also like to extend our thanks to Chris Catalina and Jackie Gunnar with HR for making this recognition possible.[1035.13][1035.13](applause)
I live 12 years ago with 32.
I know to feel, you just feel like the load has lifted off of you. Well at this time we have two presentations, proclamation for Juneteenth which I will read and then council member Mayor Protem Odwin Samuel will read the second one. And it reads, whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and it's called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19 and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States dating back to 1865. It was on June 19th that the Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas on Thursday, June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed into law the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act S dot 475 designating Juneteenth National Independence Day as a legal public holiday. Whereas the city of Beaumont will host an annual Juneteenth celebration in downtown Beaumont, celebrating the first year it is officially recognized as a federal holiday to acknowledge the promises, equality, respect, and understanding between people of all backgrounds and cultures. This event will take place on Sunday, June 19th, 2022 from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. There will be food trucks, a car show, and more and it will end with a blast of fireworks. There will be music from the Keisha Pratt Band, the Golden Triangle All-Star Band, DJ Upgrade with Hype Man, New Soul, and live entertainment from the original group Lakeside. So come along and enjoy the fantastic voyage. Now therefore, I, Robin Muton, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022 as Juneteenth in Beaumont, Texas, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Accordingly, I, Mayor Robin Muton, have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed this day, June 14th, 2022. Signed, Mayor Robin Muton.[1323.83][1323.83](applause) Thank you. At this time, I will have Mayor Protem Odwin Samuel to read the next proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you mayor. It gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas today, June the 14th, 2022, we celebrate 92 years of service of National Pan-Atlantic Council nicknamed the Divine Nine, D9, which was founded on May 10th, 1930 at Howard University in Washington DC. And whereas the National Pan-Atlantic Council is collaborative organization of nine historically African-American international Greeks, lettered fraternities and sororities who promote community awareness and action through educational, economic, and cultural services activities. And whereas the chartering organizations were Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and in Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, and last but not least, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. In 1931, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated and Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity joined the council followed by Sigma Gamma Ros sorority incorporated and Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated. And whereas the chartering ceremony of the National Pan-Atlantic Council of the Golden Triangle was held September the 23rd, 2016. And whereas the National Pan-Atlantic Council of the Golden Triangle continues to embrace the African-American culture and progress through years fostering cooperation among its member organizations focusing on matters of mutual concern, working together to improve southeast Texas community, supporting undergraduate growth and development, and use its collective influence to promote the general welfare of men, women, and children in this area. And whereas the National Pan-Atlantic Council of the Golden Triangle participates in various activities such as educational scholarships, encouraging civic engagement, promoting health, promoting personal development and growth, and fundraising events to help the general well-being of our community. And now therefore, Mayor Robin Muton, the mayor of the city of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, June the 14th, 2022 as National Pan-Atlantic Council Incorporated Day in Beaumont, Texas.[1521.83][1521.83](applause) And she also extends her sincere appreciation to the National Pan-Atlantic Council of the Golden Triangle for the good work they do in helping citizens in our community. Accordingly, the mayor is here and too and set her hand and caused the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed on this 14th day of June in the year of 2022. And contrary to what some of y'all might think your eyes see, I, this is not, this is blue and white.[1555.33][1555.33](laughter) So accepting this proclamation, my sorrow, Rhonda Rubin and the president of the National Board of National Pan-Atlantic Council of the Golden Triangle, and all Greeks of the Divine Nine, please come forward.[1573.03][1573.03](applause)
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, sorrow, my pleasure, my pleasure. Yes. Oh, okay, hello, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you. Hey, how you doing? Hey, bro. Hey, bro, how you doing? Good to see you. You heard that? Okay. Hey, sorrow, how you doing? Good, good. My sorrow, good to see you. All right, yes.
How you doing?
Always.
She got blue.
I meant to bring wear my guest here.
But it's still blue.
Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you for being here.
Bless you.
Yeah.
Look at my picture right here.
Everybody gotta come around. Good to see you.
Yes, yes.
Oh, we weren't finished.
I'll be on the wall.
Oh, that circle was pretty, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Since he said most of it.
This is blue and white. That's right, sorrow. That's right.
Okay, now we're gonna get a picture in a circle. So can we go back around?
And y'all welcome to come back up?
Yeah, come back around, yeah.
And they'll get the picture.
I'm gonna get in this one, Sean Audrey.
You going down?
Oh, you know I'm gonna go down.
Go down, yeah.
Cause you know you can never have much red in the butt.
Here you go.
I'm close to everybody.
Can you see Robert?
Yes.
Ready?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to stand behind me?
Yeah, you can. Everybody, everybody wants to stand behind me for a minute. Just for a minute, stand up.
Yeah.
We can just stand up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Robin Muton, Honorable City Council Members, City Officials, and Chamber Guests. I bring your greetings from the National Pan-Atlantic Council of the Golden Triangle. I am Rhonda Rubin.
I am Rhonda Rubin, and it is a privilege to serve as the chapter's president. It is our chapter's honor to receive the proclamation from Beaumont, Texas. The National Panathletic Council, as our brother Aldwin Samuel says, referred to as a Divine Nine, is a collaborative organization composed of historically African-American fraternities and sororities. This council continues to promote unity, a service-for-life philosophy, foster leadership, development, and scholarship achievements. Our chapter consists of eleven local member chapters in the Golden Triangle. Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Beaumont and Port Arthur Chapters, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Beaumont and Port Arthur Chapters, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Beaumont and Port Arthur Chapters, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority. Our chapter will celebrate Juneteenth with our trademark of service by conducting a voter registration in Beaumont and Port Arthur, Texas. This event is led by our committee chair, Denise Spooner, and co-chair Ramona Parks. A few National Panatholics of Golden Triangle service projects, uh, for the current year has been a March of Dimes, baby shower for the neonatal ICU at Baptist Hospital, St. Elizabeth Hospital, the Medical Center of Southeast Texas providing diapers, bibs, wipes, bottles, and car seats, service hours at the Salvation Army and the Stewart House, eight scholarships given to the students at four local high schools, second annual Women's Day program keynote speaker, Delta's past twenty-fourth International Cynthia M. A. Butler McIntyre, it was a scholarship raiser, scholarship fund, volunteer at election sites, and other projects as well as those still in the works. Please allow me to recognize our executive board and Juneteenth committee members, MPAC Chapter Executive Board, President Rhonda Rubin, Vice President Dr. Albert Thickepin. Will you raise your hand? Recording Secretary Anessa Washington, Treasurer Sylvia Edwards, Financial Secretary Corylissa Roberts, Correspondent Secretary Ramona Parks, Business Manager Yolanda Avery, Chaplain Nicole Dunn, Parliamentarian James Arseneau, Historian Denise Spooner, Advisor June Rosio, and Chapter Representatives. If any other presence or members of the Divine Nine, please stand and be recognized. Thank you to everyone who came and participated and support, and again, special thanks to all those who worked tirelessly to make this event a success. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much for all of the community work that you do, for all of the community hours that you've put in to make sure that our community is a great city to live in and it's success. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. So if you were here for the presentation, now is the time, if you would like to leave, you may do so at this time. You are welcome to stay, but I will allow you time to exit. Thank you so very much for coming. Now is the time for any citizen who would like to speak on public comments. You may make your public comments. Please make sure that you fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak, and you will be given three minutes. The green light will come on at the beginning, and the red light will be your indication that your time is up.
Uh, Sam Jaeger III, fifteen hundred City West Boulevard, Houston, Texas, items five and six on the agenda.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is my first opportunity to address the council, so I really appreciate the opportunity today, and it's a, it's a real inspiration to see the number of people that have given such service to the city and its citizens. Uh, my name is Sam Jaeger III. I'm president of Sam Jaeger Incorporated. I'm here today representing Plow Realty L. P. Uh, I'm here to represent them on the creation of a municipal management district under items five and six. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have today. Uh, the property, just so you know, is located at the confluence of Delaware and Dowlin and Gladys, uh, and my goal and objective is to, to move forward, uh, with a, with this creation so that we can, uh, move to the next steps with the Drainage District in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts.
Welcome to Beaumont, and, uh, I am thrilled to have you look at Beaumont as an opportunity to create what I understand to be a master plan community. Could you elaborate a little bit about what your objectives and designs? I've looked at your website, and I've seen some of the, uh, projects that you've done in the Houston area, which are very impressive. What are your plans in Beaumont, assuming that this goes forward?
Uh, I appreciate that question. Uh, just to give you a little background, uh, we're a land development group out of Houston, Texas, based. Uh, we do do master plan subdivisions in the city of Houston. Um, our plan for this, uh, property is to continue with the entitlement work that we are, this is part of, this is the first step in that process. We've already met with the Drainage District as well, and we have some agreements with the Drainage District that we're working through. Uh, but goals and objectives are to, um, hopefully work with the city kind of hand and glove and find a way to build a value proposition in this community that, uh, that is something everybody can be proud of. Uh, you know, our, our goal is to bring our expertise in master plan development, uh, to the city and to try to find ways, uh, to work with the city to leverage that and create, um, and store value for the city and for the citizens.
Would you be working with local builders, or do you have your own builders that you bring in, or how does that work?
It's pretty early in the process to make that decision, but I think we'd be open to all of those things. Uh, one of the things we are focused on in, in these types of communities is meeting certain architectural styles and thematics, uh, amenities. Uh, we're focused on, uh, many different types of things that add value, uh, to communities. And so for us, uh, it's gonna be about what the right fit is, uh, for this particular community, and that may include local, and it may include some that come from, uh, outside the community, but at the end of the day, you know, the goal and objective is to bring the right fit to, uh, the subdivision in the community.
And looking at some of the other projects that you've done, I've seen amenities such as, uh, green belts, uh, bike trails, uh, uh, local neighborhood parks, uh, lakes, all kinds of things like that. Is, is that part of the anticipation? I know we're super, super early, and I don't want to get the cart, you know, out ahead of the horse, but, uh, are, are those the type of things that you typically do?
Uh, yes, I mean, in typical master plan development in Houston, we do things like create municipal, um, management districts and municipal utility districts, uh, to help us with public financing of facilities, uh, like you're discussing. So recreational facilities, um, drainage facilities, water and sewer facilities, and they're critical to being able to deliver that type of caliber of a community. Uh, most subdivisions in Houston are built with that model, uh, and as you could, as you've probably seen over the years, uh, over the last twenty years, since recreational improvements became part of the property that can be, or part of the, uh, cost that can be financed through that, the number of recreational facilities and the types of recreational facilities that are available to the residents of the community, uh, has gone way up, and the quality of these communities has gone way up as a result. And so we want to bring all of that expertise. This is, like you said, the first step in that process, and I don't want to get too far out ahead because we, we have to run economics, and we have to work with the Drainage District and work with other parts, uh, to, to run through the feasibility analysis. But, you know, our goals and objectives are along the lines of what you discussed, which is to try to find ways to bring, uh, high value to the property and, uh, have it be, you know, a store of value, uh, that, that lasts well beyond the development.
Last question I have is that part of the site that you're acquiring has incredibly great commercial potential along, uh, Dowlin, along, uh, Delaware. Would commercial development somewhere down the line be something you would look to do?
Absolutely. I think, uh, you know, in looking at, uh, the areas along Delaware and Dowlin, uh, there's certainly, um, uh, there's an HEB directly across the street. There are several banks across the street, lots of pad development that's there. And so one of the things that, uh, we talked to Mr. Boone about was coming back to the city to talk about development agreements and other things that will facilitate that type of development. Uh, there are some things that we will need to visit with the city about, uh, to work with the city to try to deliver, uh, this type of community. I think it'll be one of the first ones that the city of Beaumont really has experienced, and so there'll be some different things that we'll approach you with that are conventional things that we use all the time in, um, in Houston, but something that we're happy to work with the city on and educate the city on and, and try to find ways that we can work with the city in a win-win, uh, s- situation.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
First and foremost, welcome to Beaumont. I'm gonna piggyback off what Mike said, and first and foremost, I also like the fact that it's the first one, but we're looking to do many more things. We're looking to grow Beaumont, so welcome. Uh, my question was for the citizens that's watching that are interested and want to know more about this project. I know you guys have a website. Is it possible that we can say the website to the community so they can go look at some of the other projects you guys done in the past?
Uh, my website for my company is samjaegerinc.com, uh, but we will have additional, uh, information as we develop a development plan and work with the city on a plan and get to a point where we can, we can put that forward. The community itself would have a website that we would put out there, and that's pretty typical for some of our, uh, other communities. Another community of mine is audubonliving.com. It's a three-thousand-acre master plan that I have in the city of Magnolia, which is a smaller town in the northwest side of Houston. I have another one that's harperspreserve.com, which is right next to the Woodlands, uh, on the east side of I forty-five, and we have a new project, uh, that just launched the website, which is, uh, fullsherlakes.com near the city of Fullsher. So if you wanted to see examples of our type, of our communities that we're doing right now, uh, with the types of amenities that Councilmember Gitts mentioned, uh, you could look at any one of those websites, and those would be good representations of the types of work that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duria.
Yes, just a couple of questions for myself and the citizens. Can you explain what exactly is a municipal management district and what's the advantage to the city of Beaumont to creating one?
So a municipal management district or a municipal utility district, either one of those, is really an overlapping public financing vehicle, so similar to a public improvement district or other district that collects its own taxes, uses the value that we create within our district to sell bonds, to reimburse us for infrastructure that we're gonna build. So we have to earn that reimbursement. What I mean by earn is we have to put the lots on the ground, we have to develop the homes, we have to create the taxable values, and we can only really sell the bonds once we've done that. So, um, we, you know, it's very, uh, important to us to be successful because our, our reimbursement is tied up in our ability to execute. Uh, and most municipal utility districts and management districts that are used in the city of Houston, for example, for master plan developments, uh, they assist us in, in basically building a better community so we can finance, uh, water, sewer, drainage, uh, we can finance roadway systems, and we can finance park and recreational facilities. Uh, that is all limited by the total amount of value that we can create within the district, and so, um, to, back to the council members' point, having, uh, higher value commercial, uh, and other higher value uses in the property helps us with that exercise, uh, because that value is disproportionate to the cost to develop it. So when you build a shopping center, it's not as, it's not as cost-intensive as it is when we put lots and streets on the ground, and so it helps us balance those, those issues out. Uh, and so, um, in terms of the benefit to the city, well, it's, the great thing about it is, uh, it's, it's self-financed, so the city is not financing that, that infrastructure. Ultimately, the city, the city will be the beneficiary of it because all the water and sewer, we will be, uh, you know, using the city's water and sewer system, but we'll be building those lines and financing those lines, uh, through the taxable values that we create.
And the city will still be collecting property taxes and stuff like that?
It doesn't impact the city's ability to collect taxes. This is literally an overlapping, uh, uh, district, so the city's tax collections and other things will continue to operate the same way. When we met with, uh, city staff on this, uh, we, they asked us questions about the water and sewer system, and again, uh, we'll be, um, using city services, and the city will continue to do the things that it does now, which is to supply water and sewer services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Turner.
Sorry, last question. When citizens hit the word bun, a lot of citizens, I just wanted to be confusing, it's actually the property that would be inside of the district, correct? It's not the whole city? It would be just the property inside of the district?
The district will have a boundary that will cover the three-hundred-and-sixty-five-acre tract. That boundary is where that taxing, taxing authority is, so yes, the people that live in that, uh, community and/or the commercial businesses that are in that, that, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-acre parcel will be the ones that will, uh, be taxed and be the ones that will finance that, that bond infrastructure. Uh, that's normally how that's done, and, uh, they are aware of that because there are notices and other things that we file when we sell property to make them aware of that. We also post that on our websites typically, so there's a lot of disclosure that goes around that, but they also are the recipients of all the benefits we're talking about, which is the higher values, the amenities, and the other things that go with being part of that.
Yes, sir. I just wanted clarity, you know, when people hear it, I just didn't want any confusion, but thank you.
I appreciate that very much.
I, I have a question, and then I'm gonna come back to you, Councilmember Gitts, and then Councilmember Duria. Do you know, uh, how many homes would be in that tract of land?
I don't.
Residential homes.
I don't currently. Uh, we are, again, working with the Drainage District on, uh, things like detention and drainage, and so that will take up some portion of the area. There's already some drainage facilities on the property. We will have to work through, uh, streets and utilities and, and do land planning. All of that will come later, uh, as we go through the process. So it'll be something that we will start to work through, uh, and we'll have to come back to the city at a future point and talk to the city about, you know, other things, development issues that we need to work through, uh, so that we can execute the plan that we're talking about, and there'll be more details that sort of come with that process. So I don't mean to be vague about it, but we, we are early. This is sort of a first step in the process. It's hard to put a plan together to identify those things without, you know, fully understanding what, um, what's available to us in terms of the public infrastructure and the financing that might be available because that would change the plan dramatically. So if we can have, uh, this management district, for example, uh, then we know we can finance different things different ways, and we have the ability to, um, develop the property differently, and so we want to make sure that we talk to the Drainage District, we talk to the city, and we reach out to everybody early so that we can figure out how all those things will work, and then try to put a plan together that works with, with all the limitations that we will have as we go forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts.
Mr. Jaeger, I'm looking to the future, and I know it's early. I'm anticipating that once this project is complete and there's hundreds of new homes out there, there may be a need for a new elementary school, and I see one of our school board trustees here in the audience tonight, today, Denise. And so, uh, does your company ever set aside property for a school, or do we just look to the school district to maybe, uh, acquire some property nearby to service the needs? Uh, should that be the case in the, in the future?
So normally, we'll reach out to the school districts and sort of, uh, once we understand how many houses and residential units that we think we might have, we'll let them know. They obviously have their own demographic information, and they're, uh, trying to make decisions about, you know, where they are in the life cycle of various schools and, um, and what their capacity is. Uh, we just recently sold a school to Mag- uh, Mag- Magnolia I S. D. for an elementary school in our Audubon project. I just did another one with Lamar I S. D. in our Fullsher Lakes project, so we're sort of proactive on that front. Um, and at the end of the day, a lot of that gets down to, um, you know, what's the right answer for the school and what's the right answer for the development. Uh, there's obviously value in having a school very nearby, uh, one of our developments, and I think we do have a school that's fairly close, uh, if I, if I recall correctly, but, um, but yes, you know, those, those are things that we reach out and talk about. Um, we also have a fire station, I think, that's, uh, pretty close to the site, and a park. So, um, one of the things that we probably will be thinking about as we're doing the development plan is how we might be able to connect to those things so that, you know, there's walkability and there's, there's other things that we can kind of tie those existing assets the city has together with the development and really build value, uh, in, in where people are gonna live.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duria.
You don't have, uh, you said the boundaries of it, but there is no western boundary. How far west does it go? Because there are some people that live in that area already, and I'm wondering how that would affect the folks that already live there. How, how far west would this go?
So, um, Delaware is a street that, uh, connects Gladys and Dowlin, and it runs kind of in a semicircle. So Delaware is the western boundary for all but about eleven acres. There's one tract that's on the other side, on the west side of, of Delaware that is, um, that, that is owned by this, uh, group, uh, but beyond that, it's, it's bounded by really, you know, sort of Gladys, uh, Delaware, and Dowlin.
It doesn't go all the way out to, uh, Major Drive?
No. No, sir.
So, nobody already lives in this track that y'all are setting up this?
No, sir. Nobody lives in the track, which, which actually precipitates Item 6 on the agenda, which is, in order to meet the regulations for elections from the state of Texans, we need to have a couple of voters that will vote bonds ultimately in the project. And so, we've, we've, we've approached the city about that, and we'll need consent from the city to, to allow for a couple of temporary mobile homes in there so that we can have registered voters that can, that can vote the bonds for the Management District in order to meet Texas election law.
Any other questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Mayor, one of the items I'd like for the city manager to discuss a little bit about what it would mean in terms of improving the lighting through these grants. This is at no cost to the city, is that correct?
Improving, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The lighting, street lighting?
Which item number?
C?
C?
That was my question.
Okay.
Yes.
Item number C, please.
Okay. So, regarding item number C, it's authorizing the city manager to sign the safety lighting project plans in connection with the 2018 Highway Safety Improvement Program, or HSIP. And if you look at your agenda memorandum, the third part of that program is the Highway 90 or College Street from Major to I-10. TechDOT is proposing to install 42 streetlights along the south side of College Street. The installation of these new streetlights is forecasted to have a crash reduction factor of up to 49% over the next 15 years.
Have they already begun that? It looks like they have. Yes?
Yes, sir. That's already underway. They, ideally, under our maintenance agreement, they should come to council before the construction, but we just, TechDOT's really never really done that. So, at least at this point, they're coming before they're finished with the whole thing because what they're really asking you to do is accept these projects because the city forces will maintain them afterwards on TechDOT's behalf. But, it is under construction on College already.
Thank you.
Mayor, ma'am?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, Mr. Manager. I see sidewalks on here, and I see Lucas Drive. We've been having quite a little bit of conversation about sidewalks on, in that, in that area. Can you kind of enlighten us a little bit more about exactly what this may consist of?
Yeah, so Bart might be able to give us a little bit of additional information, but it's, it's described as 69s of East Tex and Lucas. So, the way I read it is, is it's sidewalks and pedestrian access there.
They're improving that intersection under the freeway.
Yeah.
So, right where Lucas crosses under East Tex, they're improving the pedestrian crossings and, and the sidewalks within that intersection.
But not down east?
Not, not beyond down Lucas, just within the boundaries of the feeder road to feeder road under the interstate. That's it.
And Bart, just to piggyback on that question, there's been a little conversation about sidewalks by the railroad tracks. Can you just kind of explain to the citizens that, you know, we don't own those railroad tracks and, you know, kind of how that process works?
We, we don't own the railroad tracks. We have to work with the railroads in order to cross either for a road or a pedestrian crossing. We have done inventory of all of the railroads within the city and identified whether or not there's a sidewalk in place leading up to it or not, and whether there's a sidewalk in place going across that railroad. And we're already working with TechDOT on an upcoming improvement project at Lucas and Helbig at that crossing. They're going to, they've agreed to incorporate a rail or a pedestrian crossing for the sidewalk there. So, they'll put the, the crossing across the rail, and then we'll tie to it with city forces. And then, we'll continue to see if there's federal funds to attack the rest of them as we go through. We, we have already as well approached BNSF as part of the upcoming Fourth Street Rehab, Street Rehab Project to facilitate the sidewalk going across the rail crossing on Fourth.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please? No other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number one is to consider a resolution approving multiple purchasing cooperative contracts for the purchase of medical supplies used in the EMS division. Pricing was requested from six of the larger vendors who are part of the purchasing cooperative programs that meet the state of Texas procurement requirements. The current contract was awarded in 2019 for an estimated total annual amount of 141, $140,136.17. Since that award, the city has added three additional ambulances, so quantities of supplies have been adjusted to maintain the supply needed for the additional ambulance units. Staff recommends that Bounty Medical of Dublin, Ohio, who has submitted a proposal with the lowest estimated annual cost of $262,166.78 be awarded as the primary vendor, and that Life Assist of Rancho Cordova, California, with an annual cost of $296,956.8 be awarded the secondary vendor. Funds are available in the general fund, and the administration recommends approval of this.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Duria?
Yes, Mr. Manager. Can you just explain for the folks why the lowest bid by QuadMed did not win it? Yeah, just want to explain to, you know, how that works.
Right. So, QuadMed of Jacksonville, Florida, they did bid 241, 892, and 26, which is lower than what we're recommending. However, they did not bid on all the required items that we outlined in the bid specifications.
Just for the folks, if it's an incomplete bid, then, you know, even though it was lower, but it was incomplete, so that's why they weren't able to accept that bid. They had to go with the next lowest one.
That's correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to award a contract to Tomek's Construction LLC of Houston for the street rehab sewer line pipe bursting project. The street rehab sewer line pipe bursting project will be used to rehabilitate sewer lines throughout the, throughout the city and replace defective manholes as well. On May 19th, 2022, seven bids were received for furnishing all labor, materials, and equipment for the project. The engineer's estimate for the project was $695,092. The bid totals are indicated in your agenda item. As you see, we are recommending Tomek's, which is not the lowest bidder. It's the second to lowest bidder. Water Utilities staff recommends rejection of the lowest bidder based on past experience with the lowest bidder. We do propose, again, to go with, recommend to contract with Tomek's Construction in the amount of $589,861.80. Total of 120 calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the American Rescue Fund for this work. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, before I call for the vote, could you please explain the reasoning and why you're able to go with the next to the lowest bid?
Yeah, I believe Bart has a handout in basically explaining why, you know, why we're not recommending going with the lowest bidder. I think, in summary, we were not, the work was not done to satisfaction. We were getting several complaints from citizens. I believe we got some manhole covers labeled with the city of Houston instead of the city of Beaumont. But, I'll let, I'll let Bart expound on that.
So, Texas Pride was the low bid on the Dallin West project. We're still working to close that project out. That project was awarded, or the pre-con, pre-construction meeting was April 27th, 2020, so over two years ago. You can see from the handout, there was a litany of issues from communication problems to workmanship to paperwork along the way, including, as Chris mentioned, a large quantity of manholes, manhole covers installed said city of Houston rather than city of Beaumont, just for an example of lack of attention to detail. But, a lot of problems with failing to notify citizens before they went in and did work. They just showed up in the yard, failure to finish the work properly according to the plans. They took a line out of the project stating that it was already PVC. We went back later, and it was not. It was in poor condition. Even up to and including at the end, now we're trying to close it out. They, they failed the bill properly according to what was done. So, just recommend, I mean, if they get things together, maybe we can give them a chance down the road, but we feel it's best to go with another vendor.
Thank you. I just wanted to point that out to the listening audience and to the citizens who may question it later. Why didn't we take the, the higher bid? Councilmember Turner?
Mr. Boone, can you kind of explain the engineer's estimate from the contract? How does that normally work with the estimate for the contract?
So, when we're, and I'll let Bart jump in here, when we're, when we're trying to estimate, you know, what a project is gonna cost, we'll have an engineer take a look at it. If you look at the attached bid document, you know, for example, it's a little hard to read with the tiny, tiny writing, but you can see that, you know, all the estimated quantities in terms of linear feet, in terms of materials are all spelled out. So, we need our engineer to basically line that out so that we have a, a proper budget estimate so that we know that what we need to budget for, for a project.
Okay. Only thing that just kind of caught my attention was, the difference was roughly almost $100,000. That's why I was just asking.
The pipe bursting has tended to be very competitive due to the number of companies that participate in the bid. So, we've been fortunate enough to get good pricing on those to date.
Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to award a contract to Alco LLC of Beaumont for the Pine Street Surface Water Treatment Plant Polymer System and Chemical Storage Tank Improvements Project. The Pine Street Polymer System and Chemical Storage Tank Improvement Project will improve the polymer dosage system in addition to replacing and adding chemical storage tanks. And again, a lot of these improvements are in order to meet TCEQ requirements. On May 5th, 2022, three bids were received for furnishing all labor, materials, and equipment for the project. The engineer's estimate for the contract is $1,380,500. The bid totals are included in your, in your agenda memorandum. I should note, the city's standard specifications require a contractor to submit a responsive bid in which all of the requirements of the invitation to bid are fulfilled without exception or deviation. The apparent low bidder did not submit a complete bid per the contract's instructions. Therefore, the apparent low bid was, has been rejected due to non-compliance. Based on review of the bid and required documents received, the Water Utilities Department agrees with Freeze and Nichols and recommends awarding the project to the second lowest bidder, Alco LLC, in the amount of $1,664,700. A total of 270 calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available from the American Rescue Fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion?
Some move for approval, second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion, Councilmember Getz?
Bart, can you say what was the deviation or exception that prevented passable enterprises from completing the responsive bid?
Yes, sir. There's a required forms checklist in the bid, has 17 items. Of those 17, they only submitted one. And in addition, had a partial submission on the conflict of interest, but they failed to submit the bid bond, the bid summary, a whole 15 other things in the thing. So, it, it was not just partially incomplete or missed one thing. There, there was a ton missing on this one, unfortunately.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Bart, have y'all gone back and looked and seen where we were over compared to our cost estimate?
I think the prices have just gone up on, on things. The previous time we came to council on this, the low bid was 1.998 million, and we, we recommended to reject all bids, and we put it back out again. Preferred Facilities Group, which is on this bid list, was the apparent low bidder last time. So, with prices going up, we feel the $1.6 million figure is, is good. If, we, we feel like if we went out again, it's probably gonna go up from here, unfortunately.
Is Freeze and Nichols, are they fee-based on this project, or how are they contracted?
They're the ones that did the engineering.
I know, but are they being paid based off of a fee on the construction cost?
They got a engineering services agreement, and I'm not sure what the exact amount is, but I can get it for you. But, it's outside of this fee.
All right, thank you.
It's not included.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to award a contract to King Solutions Services LLC of Houston. The citywide pipe bursting contract Phase 1 will be used to rehabilitate sewer lines through pipe bursting and replacement of defective manholes. On May 19th, 2022, four bids were received for furnishing all labor, materials, and equipment for the project. The engineer estimate for the project was $4,175,000. The recommended bidder, King Solutions, submitted a bid of $3,670,700. To Bart's point, the sewer line pipe bursting seems to be coming in a little lower than other contracts. Water Utilities Staff does recommend this project be awarded to King Solutions in the amount of $3,670,700. A total of 365 calendar days are allocated for the completion of the project. Funds are available for this work in the American Rescue Fund, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. I would like to point out on this bid, it's, the city bid was almost $500,000 more than what it came in. So, that was great.
Right. Pipe bursting, just like I said, it's been very competitive to this point. So, we've been fortunate.
Great. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion, Councilmember Getz?
Bart, can you say where this work is going to be done? Is it throughout the city or is it one portion of the city? And where's it gonna start first?
It's throughout the city. We've got, I can pass this around, but it's, it's around all areas of the city. Sherry, would you mind just passing that around?
Thank you.
It's the next phase to satisfy our SSO requirements, but it's all around the city.
So, Bart, it's no particular area of town that you're starting?
They're called out identified areas, but no, we, we haven't specified a particular spot to start, just these spots that need to be done, and the contractor can attack them in whatever order they see fit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, as we're looking at that, I would point out, I think Bart and his group has put the pipe bursting work, I think done from 2015 to 2020 on the webpage. And it lists out the amount spent as well as the linear feet that have been repaired. So we'll continue to update that as, as we go forward.
Thank you.
And we do have 743 miles of pipe that thankfully doesn't all need work, but.
Thank God.
And where are we at this point? Of course, percentage. Are we, I know at one point we were 50%. Do we know what that percentage is at this point?
I don't have an exact percentage, no, sir. And we're making progress, I can tell you that much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number five is to consider granting consent for the creation of a municipal management district within the boundaries of the city of Beaumont. On February 28th, 2017, city council approved Resolution 1743, supporting legislation for the creation of Beaumont Municipal Management District Number One. Following this, the 81st, 85th Texas Legislature established the 364.6 acre district bordered on the north by Delaware Street, on the east by Dowlin, on the south by Gladys. The creation of the management district, if enacted, will allow the provision of streets, drainage, water and sewer and other amenities to develop this large tract of land within the city. We've had some discussion, I think, here already. I did hand out, you should have at your, at your seats there, two maps. Again, these districts are new for the city, but if you look at the maps I've handed out, these are from the state's, the state's website. I've got two maps. One is specifically the Houston region, which you can see outlined in red are the MUDs, Municipal Utility Districts. The second map includes the east part of Houston, but also the area around Beaumont. And so you can see outlined there in the second map, there are three MUDs that surround the city. You can also see the district in question that's been approved by legislation is also shown on the map. It's shown as red, it actually should be green. But anyway, I wanted to provide these maps because again, this municipal district is new for us, but it's not new for the state. As, as we discussed earlier, Sam Jaeger is here with Sam Jaeger Incorporated. He's also here with Jessica Holbeck with Allen Boone and Humphreys. Their legal counsel, who is, has quite a bit of expertise in these types of districts. But again, as, as noted, 2017 was kind of the beginning of the process where city council approved this to move forward. The legislature has also authorized this management district. And at this time, we're recommending that the council approve this resolution to approve the next step in the process of the creation of this district.
Thank you. You've heard the reading. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number six is an ordinance entitled an ordinance allowing a period of up to 24 months for the placement and occupancy of two manufactured or industrialized homes within Beaumont Municipal Management District Number One, providing for severability and providing for repeal. Again, as discussed, on February 28th, 2017, city council approved Resolution 1743, supporting legislation for the creation of the management district. Following this, in the 85th Texas Legislature, the district was authorized. As the Texas Legislature has now enabled the district, the next step included a formal consent by the city to create the district, which was just approved. Upon consent, the district will hold an organization meeting to organize the district's board and hold a bond and tax election. In order to conduct this election, there must be residents living within the district. As such, placement of these two housing units will enable this to happen. This temporary amendment would allow the units to be placed and the election to be held. Based on this, the administration is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the ordinance.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Felschah, then councilmember Neal.
I understand the word temporary, but is there a timeline or?
24 months.
Oh.
Two years, yes, sir.
Does it say? Okay. My bad. Thank you.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Where are y'all planning on placing these mobile homes?
Prelimarily, near the fire station on Gladys.
And we're going to get permanent utilities for them?
Yes, sir. They'll be required to have access to electricity, water, sewer, building permits, all that's going to be required.
And they'll have their own access on to the property, not through city property?
They, I expect they would access through Gladys. Or from Gladys, I should say.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. No other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Now's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. You will be given three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes and the red light will come on for your indication that your three minutes are up.
Vernon Durden, 16436 West Ferry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
From the mayor and city council, thank you for the Juneteenth proclamation. It's a long time coming and I think our citizens will do well to learn about Juneteenth and more than a celebration and information about what it's about. So we'll, a couple of questions. Will city transit be available that day for folks who may want to go to the celebration of the bus system? One thing is the fine gentleman from Houston brought forth about the municipal management district. I'm somewhat concerned that we have a plan to increase development downtown and I was hoping that there would be some type of incentive for that's fine gentleman to be incentivized to do something downtown. Also with the property that Beaumont presently have, the Bacon property, if you can be incentivized to revitalize some of those areas where there are already some inhabitants. A new district will create new voting. It's hard to say about this legislature. They're approving stuff now, it's kind of hard to think that everything they're doing is for the better of our city. And thirdly, I've been hearing contracts being won by persons by default. I would hope that Mr. Bart, Mr. Bart would probably, why it's not his, a job to train bidders. We may be missing some opportunities when bid packages come in incomplete. If it is a part of his job or oversight to make sure that all bidders fill out everything on the bid sheet. Giving him a call back, whatever. He may be doing it, it's just that I'm hearing that bids being won by default. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just to clarify for the citizens that are listening, we are in the process of hosting that vendor fair for purchasing that we talked about. And a lot of the contracting bids that we do are formal bids, which require them to sign each page at the end. So there is some verification. I know that Bart is also working into doing an automated system for bidding, which will not allow someone to go to the next page until they input something. So we are aware of the problem and staff is working really hard to fix that for the future.
Do you have the date for the vendors?
It was July 20th or something.
Ooh.
It's in, it's in July.
Good job, councilman. It's in July.
It was mid-July. And, and also with current bids and even when they're electronic, they're submitted sealed. So we, we cannot see any of them until they're open for evaluation. So there's no provision for us to, to tell them something's wrong during the middle. It's, it's a sealed bid process.
For bigger, larger bids, there are pre-construction bid meetings where we, you know, can explain expectation. Don't necessarily really go over the bid, but we do tell them all sections have to be complete. That information's on the website, it's very detailed. Our purchasing office is pretty good at like answering questions throughout the bidding process. So a lot of it just comes from, you know, bidders being more astute, but again, working to fix the problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Williams, 9380 Rick Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Honorable Mayor Muton, city council members. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor Muton, for issuing a proclamation on Sunday for Women Veterans Day in Beaumont. It was an amazing event. Thank you again. I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to be quick. At last week's city council meeting, we had a disabled veteran here by the name of Preston Thibodeau, who spoke out, out about how he was being targeted and harassed by his neighbor across the street from him. Mr. Preston has lived in the Amelia neighborhood, Ward Two, which is also my neighborhood, for 20-plus years. He had mentioned that his house had been shot up numerous times. His mailbox had been vandalized and how he has just been a victim of harassment in his own front yard. By that, I mean the neighbor would shine his car headlights intentionally at his house at nighttime. Ask yourself, how would you feel if that happened to your parents, your loved ones? What would you do? Why wasn't there an investigation of deadly conduct with a firearm and vandalism charges brought? Instead, the police handcuffed Mr. Thibodeau and brought him to the mental health ward at Baptist Hospital. Why? The police department got the wrong person. Where is this police report? Because I want to read it. We must never treat our disabled veterans this way. As you know, I'm a United States Army veteran myself and I am not invisible. I refuse to let our veterans get, not get the justice that they deserve. Mr. Thibodeau volunteered his life for this country, for the freedoms that you and I get every day. And this is how he is being treated? We must do better. We have to do better. I've got your six, Mr. Thibodeau, at all times. Also, today is the Army's 247th birthday. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask for councilmember comment and I will start with you this time. Councilmember Neal, first.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Just wanted to wish everyone a happy Juneteenth. Go out and enjoy the festivities.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschah.
The same. Just congratulations on all the employees that got the awards today and looking forward to Juneteenth.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Congrats to the employees as well. En route to city council today, Mr. Boone, Liberia Park. Grandma called me and she said the timer for the splash pad is like every minute and a half, she has to get back up and go turn it back on. I just wanted to see if, how does those timers work? And I told her I would address it, so that's what I'm doing. And she also said there's a few bee and wall snesses on the playground equipment and it's, it's around the kids. Secondly, Bart, I'm pretty excited about the talk about the crossings with the railroad tracks at Lucas and Hillbilly. It's been quite a lot of chatter, you know, on social media, people have been reaching out to councilmembers personally. If possible, can we know a estimated timeline in the future? You don't have to say it right now, you can email it to me.
It's a text dot project.
Okay.
And it's in conjunction for the railroad, so I don't have an exact timeline. It'll be sometime in the next year, maybe a little more than that even. But when they redesign that intersection for safety, they'll put that crossing in for us.
Okay. My next question is, is, is real good that we're doing the bid vendor process? How are we going to kind of market it to get it out there to the people in the community?
So our communications group is pushing it out through all media channels. And so we'll, we'll continue to do that in the next couple of weeks as we get closer to July.
Thank you, Chris. And my last question is, I know we've been talking about a lot of MUDs, PIS, TIRS, the tax increment reinvestment zones. I think it would be smart if we can kind of consider doing a outside workshop to get better acquainted and get the citizens better knowledgeable about all these different things we're talking about. I've kind of read to get ahead of it, since I see this the direction to get more economic development, I think it'd be wise that we can kind of look at, you know, doing an outside workshop.
Yes, sir.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gitts.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, congratulations to all of the employees for their longevity. Congratulations to our new assistant police chief, well done, Jason Plunkett. Also, again, Mr. Jaeger, welcome to Beaumont, you and your team. Thank you for being here. It's going to be a pleasure to get to work with you and get to know you better. And if there's anything I can do, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Gitts, and councilmember Durya.
Thank you, Mayor. First, on Liberia Park, I spoke with the grandmother yesterday. Turned everything in. Jimmy Neal was supposed to send somebody out there today to get all that checked on as far as the timer and the bees, because the grandmother got stung yesterday. Okay. Also, I would, Ms. Williams, if you could maybe speak to one of the police officers here before you leave and they might be able to give you a hand as for our update on that situation out there as far as with the police. If one of y'all could speak to her, maybe give her a little information, I appreciate it. Also, be careful. I was out riding my bike this morning, saw a six-foot alligator in the canal on Downs Road. So y'all be careful out there, because I just stood looking at him and he looking at me for a while. And then he left and I left. Also, I don't know if y'all noticed, we had spoke about it's time to rezone our wards and there's a process where citizens can turn in ward maps. You can, there's, you can go to the city website and, and click on that, but it's, we're getting ready to, because of the 2020 census, we'll have to redo our wards, because some of us lost population, some of us picked up population. But the citizens can also participate in that, so I just wanted to let y'all know. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. City manager?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I would like to say to our city attorney, Sheree Reed and her family, you have our condolences for the loss of your grandmother. Sorry for your loss. And also, I would like to congratulate all of our employees, which total 400 years of service, not only to the city, but to our citizens. And thanks for your help, Chris, and also HR for a great presentation. Also, Juneteenth, Juneteenth will be celebrated on Father's Day, this Sunday, from four to nine. But starting today, there was lunch at the lake. But on Thursday, there is a sundown concert series at the Event Center in conjunction with the Juneteenth celebration from six to eight, featuring the Flavor Band. So please go out Thursday and join everyone at the Event Center. So please go out Thursday, uh, and join everyone at the Event Center. Also, uh, again, Sunday, uh, we're gonna block off Main Street and between College and Forsite, uh, the entire Main Street will be blocked off. And we will have food vendors lined up down Main Street. Also, um, it'll be live music, a car show, fireworks, um, as the proclamation read. A band from Houston, hype man, who? There's a hype man, um...
The poet New Soul.
The poet New Soul.
Yes.
And, uh, of course, you know, that's not from my era, because I couldn't even say it. And, um, from my era, the Lakeside Band from the seventies, we do know. And, uh, of course, Keisha Pratt Band from Houston, so please come out. We want everyone to come out and celebrate, uh, Juneteenth. It's gonna be, uh, a great celebration. And of course, it's gonna be Father's Day, so fathers can come out. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, a great car show and hopefully some of those dads that brag in the backyard about how great their barbecue is, they could, uh, put it on the pit, because councilmember Durio and councilmember Turner has already volunteered to be, uh, the first testers of the meat. So, uh, looking forward to a great weekend. Also, uh, this weekend, um, I had the honor of reading a proclamation for, uh, Women's Veterans Day, which is June 12th. And I learned so, so much. And, um, veteran Mary Williams, thank you for inviting me. It's a wonderful, wonderful program, so educational, things that I had not, uh, learned until Sunday. And just the mere fact that it was only, uh, put into act, uh, June 12th of 2018 and women had served since, what, World War I? Yes, and so women have been serving on the front line and in combat. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you for the wonderful work that you've done and that you continue to do, Mary, along with all of the other female veterans. So, thank you. Beautiful, beautiful ceremony. Also, on Saturday, um, I was out at Gladys City, also, uh, reading, um, an appreciation for the Crowley family, who, um, we have a new addition to Gladys City, um, which, uh, started a business here, which pretty much started the first robotics. And that business is, um, four generations and they're still here in Beaumont, running a business off of Fennet Road. So it started four generations ago and our city is still reaping the benefits of that. So that was, um, another very exciting thing on, uh, Saturday. In addition to that, um, I also got a call from the grandmother on yesterday concerning the bees and she was stung. So I brought out Band-Aids and alcohol, because she was really, really stung bad. And, um, she had, um, a two-year-old grandson that was out playing at the water pad. And she says she surely got her exercise, because she had to keep getting up, pushing the button to keep the water going. So I'm sure that's an easy fix and, uh, also with the bees and... But I will say that, um, the park was very well manicured and the grounds were really, really pretty. So I want to thank staff for that. And, um, in addition to that, I also received a call, uh, and we continue to receive calls about, uh, the flashing light at Washington and 11th Street. Um, I try to avoid it as much as I can by going by the fire station number 10 and Municipal Street and taking waverly because of the congestion with that light. And again, we do know the railroad, uh, plays a big part in that. But I did meet with, uh, city manager Boone on last week, asking for an update. And as soon as we have an update, we will put it on the website. And so with all of that said, at this time, city council will consider matters contemplating our pending litigation in accordance with Section 551 dot 071 of the government code to meet in executive session with G A D V dot Inc., DBA, L and L General Contractors versus the city of Beaumont, cause number A dash 0207973. Again, thank you for coming. We will recess into executive session and spread the love. Thank you.